I take your seat.
Okay, well, it's time to begin our workshop and appreciate everyone who's here in attendance. We've got some information to go over and we're kind of in this format that makes it look a little more formal than it needs to be for purposes of videotaping, but Commissioners, as you know, this is a workshop, more informal setting. This meeting is intended to provide information, discussion for Commissioners to get a full grasp of the issues and have information from staff, so it is not a public hearing, so we're not, we don't have provision for public input. However, if a Commissioner has a specific question of an individual, well, certainly they can call them to the podium. But with that, Commissioners, does there any comments from any of you before we begin?
Yes, sir.
Not seeing any, then Mr. Manager, I'll ask you to get us moving.
All right, Commissioners, Mike Scholes County Manager, welcome. We have three topics on the agenda today. The first one, led by Annette Graham and Tim Kaufman, reference to the funding of senior centers, in which I'll produce some options available. This, if you remember, goes back to the VOCC workshops and also VOCC budget adoption, where we talked about senior center funding. And next, we'll have Brent Shelton, head of the EcoDevo team with Lindsay, to go through two items referencing funding of WEBA and also SCAD. WEBA being the Wichita Independent Business Association and then SCAD, South Central Kansas Economic Development District. So without further ado, we'll kick it off with Annette.
Good morning, Commissioners, Annette Graham, Division on Aging.
Good morning.
So, to kind of give you a little background, County Manager gave you a little bit, but I'll kind of talk a little bit specific about this issue. Currently Sedgwick County Aging Mill Levy Fund, 17 senior centers, total funding amount of $620,000. The Board of County Commissioners requested Sedgwick County Division on Aging to develop a mechanism to allocate limited resources to senior centers in 2003. So up until, at that time, this was again becoming an issue. What was happening, there really wasn't any formalized or formal way to allocate funding for the senior centers. And senior centers have always been a component of the Aging Mill Levy funding, ever since that came in existence and was implemented in 1984. So that's always been a component, one of the categories of funding. But what had been happening was that funding was allocated kind of at the time of the annual budget, based on which senior center showed up and asked for funding. So we had funding levels all over the place and there really wasn't any kind of structure to that. So the Commissioners at that time asked the Department to look into this. And at that time, we came back to the Commission and provided a multitude of options. And the Commissioners chose, at that time, the current funding formula that we have in place. And so that was implemented over a two-year timeframe because it did increase the overall funding. So in 2005 and 2006, that was 50% one year and 50% the next year, to bring everybody up to these current funding formula levels. So as you know, we have the senior clubs, the senior center multi-levels, one, two, multipurpose, and then the top level. So that was implemented. At that time, there was discussion and understanding that that formula, although it had opportunities and built-in mechanisms for both, if senior centers weren't meeting the criteria, there were funding things in place that would move them down. And so that was part of that funding formula. There was also opportunities for senior centers to ask for increased funding. However, that was never a guarantee. At that point in time, the discussion was that that would always be up to the Board of County Commissioners. So what we're seeing now is kind of the same situation, that we're having some concerns about the funding formula and availability of funding. The total funds have remained limited during this time. And I said, the last couple of years, we've seen concerns around the budget, time at the budget hearings, raised about the funding formula and the access to funding. So we were again asked to, the Division was asked to review options and alternatives to the current process. So we have put together these alternatives for your review. So option one, the senior center funding would be eliminated in 2019. With this option, the senior centers would be funded at the current level, at 2018 level, what they're currently getting. They would continue to provide service, much in the same manner as they do now, meeting the current established criteria. So we have a multitude of criteria set, based on what level of funding, for a club, a multipurpose, so the top level. So they all have some of those, based on education, special events, hours of operation, and staffing patterns. Senior centers could apply for increased funding in the fall of this year. And the Advisory Council then would review the funding applications and would assess the request and make prioritized recommendations for funding, in the same manner that the other funding. So we have, in addition to senior centers, we have in-home and community services that are funded out of the Aging Mill Levy. And then the Advisory Council also reviews all the applications for the physical disabilities program funding, which is not funded under the Aging Mill Levy, but under the general Mill Levy, but that they also review and make recommendations on that. Any increased funding, then, that would be come out of that Advisory Council, would be incorporated into the annual Division of Aging budget proposal. So this would kind of put it in the same playing field as the other providers. They would request the funding. It wouldn't be based on the funding formula. It wouldn't be based on, we're ready to move up to the next level. It would be based on, like the other providers do, this is, we have a basis for our requests, whether that be a new program, marketing, outreach, membership drive, whatever they would want to request, they would indicate that in their application for funding to move up.
Annette, just as an explanation, to understand his proposal, if it were to be adopted, then each year, this would be a real wrestling match, each year, for who gets what, who gets cut, whether we're going to add, I mean, it takes all the structure away from it.
Well, in this option, what we had kind of put in place was that they would stay at this current funding level, and this would be to, for increased funding only. So it would kind of freeze them where they were at, but any additional funding would come to the Advisory Council, and they would review and prioritize that, along with everything else, based on the merits of that request for additional funding.
Okay, so this would deal only with additional funding, and it would not then be distributed on the basis of formula, but just rather, who, how the decision's made?
For additional funding. So the way this was envisioned, what it would be kind of freezing them at the current level, and of course, if there were any performance issues, then that would also be taken into consideration by the Advisory Council.
Okay, and it has practical effect only when we have resources to fund additional?
Yes.
Okay.
Option two, is to continue utilizing the current funding formula. So this is kind of status quo. They were, keep doing what we're doing. Funding based on the category of club or center, funding consequences are, of course, as I said, established in the current funding. It's based on set criteria. And the funding level changes, funding level changes would require additional resources, like the situation, that's where we're currently at. So any time a request for moving up, that does require additional resources, and that is then a decision that's made, of course, in the annual budget time. So this is just kind of where we're at with current funding. You see, we've got the senior clubs, level one, level two, the multipurpose senior center, level one, two, and three. And we have option three. And this is where we look at the age, the population, and it's population age 55 and up by city. 55 is because that's the age of eligibility for senior centers. People can become eligible, become members at age 55. So when we look at it this way, and we kind of ran the numbers, what we found, that the five senior centers in Wichita would receive most of the funds, because as you know, 75% of the population in Sedgwick County resides in the city of Wichita. So when we look at this, and we've got five senior centers in Wichita, what we had to do, really, to look at that, was just to divide the population by five, and then allocate that number to each of the senior centers, because there's no boundaries for a senior center. So where you live at in the city of Wichita really doesn't dictate where you become a member, because you can go anywhere in the city and become a member, or you could go outside of the city and become a member. This formula would have a very negative impact on the rural centers, simply because of that population disparity that I mentioned, the 75%. The cost per person, we took the current allocation of the senior centers, the 620,000, divided by that population, based on city demographics. And then this is what that looks like. So I have marked in red where that funding would decrease. So you can see, it has decreased in all the senior clubs. It has decreased in the senior center level ones, that are all outside of the city limits of Wichita. It also has a negative impact on the level twos. Again, those are outside the city limits proper. So where, it also has, as you can see, a very large negative impact on Derby, because it just looks at their population. And this was demographics that we got, I think the latest we could get was 2016. So the increased funding all goes to the five in Wichita.
Okay, Annette, that's based on demographic numbers, not on?
Right.
Membership?
Right, that's coming up.
Okay, and?
This is? Population only.
All right, but do you, how many folks are active in senior centers that are, I mean, it strikes me that a lot of people 55 to 65 perhaps are not active. Is that a wrong assumption or impression? I mean, it seems like a lot of those folks are still working and doing that stuff.
The last time we looked at percentage of the senior population that were members of senior centers, I think it was around 10% total of the population.
So if you redid the formula 65 and up, would that make a dramatic difference, or do you have a sense of that?
It would have some impact, yes.
Okay, okay.
So, the next one is based on membership. So with this one, we looked at reimbursement based solely on membership. And what we did was take the current membership, divide it by the funding amount, and so that equaled $61.94 per member. This doesn't take into account any of the activities, or performance, or anything, it's just solely based on membership. So here's what that would look like. So here, we see kind of, in fact, the other way, which the membership numbers would increase. So you can see in the dark numbers, the bolded numbers, that's where the increases would occur. That would be all of your senior clubs. It would be Mulvane, Mount Hope, Park City, and Derby. Derby would have a sizable increase with that formula, because they do have the largest membership of any senior center. And then you see that negative impact in Bel Air, Clearwater, Hayesville, Oaklawn, and then all of the Wichita senior centers. And these are based on 2016 membership numbers that we get from the senior centers. So then I just kind of wanted to do a little discussion of when we look back at the funding trends for the Division of Aging. As I said, we were asked to look at that first funding formula and develop that 2003, between 2003, 2004, that was presented to the Board of County Commissioners, and then implemented over a two-year time period of '05 to '06. And during that time, we did see a pretty significant increase of funding for senior centers. But we were also seeing, up till in those years, we were seeing increased availability of resources in the Aging Mill Levy. So we were seeing increases in home and community-based services and other service components. And then, as you all recall, 2008 was the economic downturn, 2008, 2009. So what we began to see was this pattern of reduced resources availability. And there were reductions made across the county in funding available for services and programs. So in 2010, you can see where we were with senior center funding, and it went down from a little under 650,000 to a stable amount in 2013, and it stayed the same since then. So what happened, we had some senior clubs in the year 2012, between 2012 and 2013, that no longer requested funding. And then we also implemented some funding reductions to meet those budget requirements for the changes of availability of resources. So you see the decline in 2013, and it stayed pretty stable at about 620,000 during that seven-year time span. Then when we look at the in-home and community services, we were about 540,000 allocated in 2010, and then you see that some declines, 2013, 2014, 2015. So we've gone down from about 540,000 to a little, little over 440,000 during that same time period. So you can see there was some, you know, fairly significant reduction in those service components. And then I just wanted to also show that the physical disabilities funding, although that's not Aging Mill Levy, it's out of the general Mill Levy, but this program, these services, oh, I'm sorry, question?
Commissioner Ranzau has a question.
Sorry.
Okay. Can you, I see these charts here, but on senior center funding, which is slide 10, I mean, it looks like it went, how much has it gone down? 600, oh, almost 650 down to 620?
20.
So about 30,000?
Right.
Overall?
Right.
Okay. Now, and then on the next one, slide 11, in-home and community-based services, which is the part that senior centers comes out of, right?
No.
No?
In-home and community is a separate category. So we have the funds, kind of like, we have funding for senior centers, which is in one category, and then we have another category, which is in-home and community.
Commissioner, both of those come from the Aging Mill Levy?
Aging.
So they're competing with each other?
Right.
Right, and so they've gone down from 540 to, or what's the delta there, basically?
About 100?
About 100,000?
Close to 100,000, yes.
Okay.
Okay.
This is both out of the same funding source?
Aging Mill Levy. That's Aging Mill Levy. This next one, physical disabilities, although we manage it in the Division of Aging, it is under general Mill Levy and not out of the Aging Mill Levy, because it's not specifically for aging services, which is what the Aging Mill Levy is required, mandated by statute, to only serve the aging services. So this was just, again, just to kind of show you what, to reflect what was happening during those years with the budget. So it went from a little over, around 347,000 to, as you can see, it had some pretty dramatic cuts in those funding over those years.
And is this the fund that the seating programs?
Yes.
Several policies come out of that?
Mm-hmm, yeah. CPRF gets a big piece of funding out of that. Mm-hmm. So then, this is just another way to look at that, kind of, when we look at the pie, what happened with the pieces of the pie? So you see this in 2010 and then 2017. To just kind of give you a visual of what's happened in those last seven years.
Okay.
And then this is simply a map to show you where the senior centers are located, in which districts. So you each have a different number of senior centers in your districts. And that is my presentation.
Well, Commissioners, before Annette gets away, comment, question, discussion?
Couple questions. The fund, the total budget that the senior centers come out of, how many other things come out of that same budget?
Out of the Aging Mill Levy budget? The total Aging Mill Levy?
Right.
Well, there's administration, there's staffing, there's internal programs.
What other programs come out of that?
What other programs come out of the total Aging Mill Levy budget?
Don't we have a priority that shows what comes out of each of these?
So you, you were, there was a request for prioritization of funding, and that was provided, and that was?
I guess what I'm getting at, we have 15 different priorities that come out of that. Nutrition program, roving pantry, commodity distribution, in-home program, medical, critical needs, aging, health screenings, adult daycare, counseling services, RSVP, senior employment, aging legal services, senior companion, Alzheimer's, and senior centers. Is that not correct?
Yes, that is correct. Those are the programs that are funded.
And out of those total 15, do you know what the total amount of money that's allocated to those 15 projects? Okay, and senior centers is what part of that?
They are 620,000.
And what's the priority of senior centers?
When the staff looked at that, we put that at number 15.
Okay, 15 out of 15. Okay, if you were going to increase senior centers, what would you cut out of those ones above that?
Well, if we were required to make cuts in the in-home and community services, what I would likely do is take that back to the Advisory Council and have them make recommendations. They are a critical part of our budgetary process, and that's how that's been in place. Those would be very hard decisions. So, and the prioritization was a very difficult decision. That was requested during the budget process, kind of in a short term, so we just had staff work on that. And as you know, for the last several years, at budget time, staff have been required across departments to prioritize services, and that's been something that we've done internally. And when we look at that, what we try to look at is urgent and critical services, and really, our focus has been on what services is closest to the door of a nursing home, to say what's going to have the most immediate impact to reduce that. We also look at the funding environment for other funding sources, like state dollars and federal dollars and other local dollars, to see what's going on in the environment, and where are the cuts, and where are those gaps in services that result at the local level that impact seniors. And our mission as an organization is to help seniors and individuals with disability remain in the community as long as possible. So these are very hard discussions and hard decisions, but that's how we've approached that prioritization.
Well, what I was hoping you'd say was that you very prioritize these, and the ones that are the 1 through 14 above that are more important.
In this prioritization, yes, that's what we did.
And so you would recommend any cuts, is what I would hope you would say, to the 1 through 14. So another question is, do our senior centers, do you have any mechanism where that you can go out and have someone that can help us find other methods of funding those? Do we have anything like that within Sedgwick County?
Commissioner, as we've discussed this internally, one of the things that we realized is that, I think the underlying question is, to what degree are we, do we need to assist senior centers in this partnership that we have in delivering services to the senior population? And one of the things that we've done at Sedgwick County for more than 10 years now, is support the nonprofit Chamber of Services through funding, and that's a resource that's available to all the, all the community partners that we engage with. We fund a lot of different organizations across the county, and we realized a long time ago that for them to be, for us to be successful, they need to be successful. And so we provide support to the nonprofit chamber, so that they can be a resource to any nonprofit, including all of the senior centers, to make sure that they're doing things that are administratively appropriate and efficient, and to help them identify additional funding sources, if that's what they're looking for, or to help them identify how to measure their services better, that sort of thing. So we do provide funding to the nonprofit chamber. We encourage all of our partners to make use of the resources that the nonprofit chamber provides. We probably ought to do a better job of marketing that relationship that we have with the nonprofit chamber.
Super, so we do have a mechanism in place today within Sedgwick County, where we can partner with those senior centers to help them look for other resources?
Yes, sir.
Very good. Are senior centers using those?
I assume that they are, but I can't tell you to what degree.
Okay, can you tell me how much that they've gathered, how much funding that they've gathered as a result of that partnership that we've got available?
I don't have that information, I'm sorry. I can try and track that down, but I don't know that.
Okay, well, that certainly seems like a pretty good option to me, that if we've got something in place right now, that they can go out and work with folks to find additional funding, that ought to be something that they'd be working at very diligently.
Hal?
That's all the questions I've got right now, thank you.
Commissioner Hal, you want to hold your comments?
I'll hold.
Okay, Commissioner Ranzau?
I have a question. Along the line of just priorities, we have, as Commissioner Dennis said, there's 15 senior centers, or 15 priority senior centers is the lowest priority. Does Advisory Council think it's appropriate to give 49% of the overall local tax fund of community service to the lowest priority of these 15? Do they think that's appropriate? Or have we asked them that question?
That question has not been asked?
That's a very important question to me, because we can't just look at one area. I think it's important to make a decision about senior centers within the overall context of all the local tax fund and community services. And some of the numbers you've given us, I'm just concerned that maybe our spending doesn't reflect our priorities, and things have gotten out of whack over time. Based on the numbers you gave us, yes, here it is. So, the in-home and community service funding on slide 11 has been reduced by 18.5%, 18.5%. But yet, the senior center funding has been reduced, but only 4.6%. I mean, that's, you know, disproportion. In-home community-based services has been reduced four times, at four times the rate. I don't know, there's just lots of things here. You've given us four options, I'm not sure, I like any of them completely. There's rationale between each of them. I think a couple of things we need to look at, is it, is, do we have overall funding distribution proportion correct? I mean, should it really be 49% to the lowest priority? And then within that, you know, we've had some people talk about some of the unfunded mandates. Perhaps our numbers are, at the different levels, need to be adjusted. Perhaps we need to release or remove some of those mandates as far as spending. I know we mandate full-time paid people in many of these, maybe we should remove those, look at a different model. Some senior centers here in the county don't get any taxpayer fund, and they're self-supporting it. I mean, we kind of, you know, we're mandating some accreditation at certain levels and certain stuff, maybe we need to give them more flexibility, because like I said, someone did complain about unfunded mandates, and I'm sensitive to that. I've always been concerned that the highest level is at 115,000. I'm not so sure we even need that level at all, maybe we could redistribute that. And then a big question I've always had is, I mean, we talk about membership. The Derby, it looks like here, according to your numbers, they have 67.8% of their population in Derby, or at least equivalent of that, enrolled in membership. But is that, are all those people really attending? And are there, at some point, I'd like more information, there's been some questions about whether or not people are signing up in multiple? There's been some questions about whether or not people are signing up in multiple senior clubs. And then of all those who are signed up, how many are actually participating and how often? That would require some sort of audit and some inspection. But I think it's important for us to know, to make good decisions. I don't think I really have all the information I need at this point, but, I mean, if you base it solely on their membership, then you can increase membership, but that doesn't mean you necessarily increase participation or attendance. It could be the same people attending. If you base it just on population, the people 55 and over, you'd have a large population, but no one coming to the thing. So, both of them have, makes sense. Maybe it needs to be a combination or something, I don't know. I like the idea of finding other sources. I mean, I think in general, we need to look at our, some of our funding for nonprofits in general that we do and determine if we need to have a criteria. I mean, we shouldn't be the sole source of nonprofits, or even a high percentage. I mean, a lot of, I've had people in private sector suggest to me that maybe we need to, you know, look at, say, we're only going to be willing to be a certain percentage of your overall operating budget. And I'm not just talking about senior centers, but other things too. But, I don't know, there are just lots of questions here, lots of different ways to go through this. But my biggest concern is, is I think, if we're going to go through, have a priority, then I think our spending needs to reflect that. And I understand that we have a formula that we're not exactly following, and maybe that needs to be amended and suspended or something, but it would be difficult for me to increase the overall funding to senior centers, considering the amount that we're spending on higher priorities seems to be, and people receiving these services, they're seniors as well, and they pay taxes as well, and we're saying these things are more needy. I don't know, just, I want to make sure our spending reflects our priorities here. And I guess I just need, continue to need more information as far as attendance and participation in some of these things. And it's kind of a complicated issue, and I guess that's all I have to say. I'm just kind of thinking and talking at the same time, but I guess that's what a workshop's for, I guess.
That's what a workshop's for. Commissioner O'Donnell?
Thank you. Annette, thanks for your presentation. So, yes, my question just has more to do with keeping good relations with the senior centers. You have quite a few senior centers that have been overperforming what their expectation was, in the hope that they were going to be receiving those additional funds and the incremental increases. Two in my district, both the Clearwater and the Hayesville, are ready and have done the work to get to that next tier for that additional funding. If the will of the commission isn't to add that funding, I do support finding that extra $73,000. But if it's not there, do we need to communicate to those senior centers that we appreciate their work, that that additional funding isn't coming in this current budget year, and to make changes accordingly? Because I think there is an expectation there was going to be additional funding coming. Even if it wasn't promised, I think there was implications. I think it was implied that they would be receiving additional funds. So, I think we're at an impasse right now of communication.
Well, we have communicated to the senior centers and what the allocation was that was approved in the budget, in the 2018 budget process. And so they are aware that that additional funding at this point in time is not coming to them, and that they will continue to be funded at the current levels that they are now.
Thank you, Mr. Chair, if I may. But I think the issue is, if we've been waiting on this for, some of these senior centers for a number of years, do we just need to get to the point saying we don't see it happening in the future and for them to adjust their programs and services accordingly? Because I think there's hope on their end that something's going to change. And that might be based on conversation coming from your department, that something might change in the future, at least with the senior centers in my district.
I think from the division level, we have tried to be very clear with all of our providers that funding requests every year are dependent on the availability of resources. We have a funding formula in place. You can request additional funding, we'll come out and do the assessment to determine if you've met that funding criteria. But that funding was always based on the availability of resources. So, I mean, I guess we could certainly reiterate that and make sure that they understand. From my experience, I believe that senior centers overall do seek to improve their services, to improve their capacity, to enhance their programming, to best meet the needs of the seniors in their community. And so that's kind of an intrinsic value of a service provider to do that, with the hope, I'm sure, that additional funding would be coming to assist that. And we have, over the years, provided workshops and senior center conferences to try to bring in national speakers. This goes back to one of your questions, Commissioner Dennis, to help provide information on best practices and alternative opportunities for resources, like grant writing and things like that. We haven't done that in a couple of years, but that's something that we've tried to do every few years, is to bring in and have hosted a conference for senior centers to help them seek out alternative options and not, of course, rely solely on Sedgwick County mill levy to fund their programs.
Thank you, Mr. Chair, if I may. No, and I do appreciate that, and that it really just comes down to, I think, the way the current system's set up with the tiers meeting certain criteria, there was just implied funding at some point. And I, and the chart is still up there about the funding. You've obviously seen a decrease, and that was put on you by the Board of County Commissioners during that timeframe. And obviously, there was a lot of economic conditions during that chart that we see on the screen right now, that predicated that. I still do support trying to find more money for those senior centers, particularly the two in District 2. Both Clearwater and Hayesville have been great partners. They've seen great growth, every year, year-over-year growth, which I know is what you want. And I think it behooves the entire county to have senior centers be more active and having more engaged seniors in all the communities, getting them out of their homes. It's healthy, and as the Board of Health for the county, I think that should be something that we're more proactive about, encouraging more quality of life for seniors. So, I'll continue to work with Commissioner Hal and some of my other commissioners to see if we can find a few more nickels in the couch cushions. So, thank you, Mr. Chair.
Thank you. And take a lot of nickels, Commissioner.
Yeah, it would. It was proverbial nickels.
Okay. I think what Commissioner O'Donnell says is probably accurate, in that we have a situation that creates a false expectation, in spite of the fact that I think you have been diligent in saying, "This is all dependent on funding, it has to go through the budget process." You may or may not get it, but these are the categories that give us some sense of rationality in how to parse out these limited resources. So, I don't know how to overcome that. We need to have some way to judge and evaluate how we make these priorities. But in doing that, I think it does create somewhat of a false expectation. And in the meantime, as long as I've been here, we've always said it's dependent on funding. So, we just have this conflict. I would want to just say that, or point out the fact that your total expenditures in aging is just over $10 million. Is that right?
For all funding sources, yes.
And of that, local funding is $3 million.
Yes.
The rest is grants, so it's restricted. Of that $3 million, senior centers get 20.8%. And yet, as Commissioner Dennis said, they are, on our prioritization of services, a lower priority function. So, I'm just trying to put this all in perspective and make not only a value judgment, but also a financial judgment on what's the right thing to do. But all these programs that we have, 15 programs, they all lend themselves to helping support the senior community, keep them in their homes, keep them healthy. And this, and the senior centers, which we have, how many are there altogether?
17 that are funded, yes.
They provide a valuable function, I don't want to discount that. And I think socialization is very important for all categories of people, but seniors especially. And so, don't want to discount them, but in a program priority, it's hard for me to kind of get over reallocating scarce resources to a 15 priority. At any rate, I guess we're still just talking. Commissioner Ranzel?
Another thought I've had, I'll just throw this out there, that we, instead of having a set amount for each level, maybe we need to have a range. So, if you're at this level, you can be funded at this level. Give some flexibility at each level. I think maybe one of the levels needs to be eliminated, perhaps, and look at reducing our unfunded mandates. But then maybe you have a range, and then we say, "This is the amount we're going to spend, send it to the advisory committee," and then you can mix all the variables as far as attendance, this, that, and another, and say, "Well, you're in this range and we're going to give you this much." I think we have set up a program that incentivizes going out and doing certain things in the expectation of getting more money. And I think maybe, I agree with Commissioner O'Donnell, that we need to get out the message that we're not going to spend any more overall, or something like that. But it also concerns me when people come here and say, you know, "We'd like to get more funding, and then we want to get matching tables and do pickleball." So, if I, you know, I mean, that may be kind of nice, but if I have additional funds, I think I'm rather going to spend it on a nutrition program and some of these other things that are higher priority. But I think maybe a range, so there's some flexibility at some of these things. I think we've got to look at the overall structure here, and it's multifactorial and it's not easy, but we have to keep it in context, I think.
Okay, Commissioner Hal?
Well, thank you, Mr. Chairman. I just want to say thank you for the presentation and for the opportunity to have a workshop on this topic. I really do appreciate the fact that we're doing this today. I think it's good, and good for the commission and good for the community for us to have this discussion. On that priority list, I have a couple of questions. Where did that priority list come from? Who made that? And the VOCC, did we approve that at some point? Or where, how did that come to be?
No, it was a request during the budget session, toward the very end of the budget session, I think the last week, the last, the Monday before the final hearing date? Is that correct? So, this was staff-generated. So, this is not something, over the years, we've done prioritization as a part of the process of the budget. That has always been staff-generated, and that priority list has changed over the years. As the environment we're in, and the situation with the federal and state dollars changes, I said, that's what we take into consideration. So, this isn't static, and it wasn't, it's not like this every year. But this was solely staff-generated. We have not gone to the advisory council and asked for them. This was a very short turnaround, and we did that with staff. I do want, I think I do have a responsibility to say that even though senior centers are listed number 15, that doesn't, we still believe in the value and the importance of senior centers. We understand that prevention and early intervention is exactly what they do. We all understand that, from all the sectors that we work in, that that's a very important service. And for seniors with their growing population, that is an important service, to help them, as you said, Commissioner O'Donnell, you know, help them get at socialization, to stay connected, to stay involved, to get the nutrition, many of these services, nutrition. So, that's an important program, definitely. And it serves a valuable need to help seniors stay healthy and remain in the community and engaged. As I said, it's a very hard, it's a very hard decision to make, to do prioritization of services that are critical. So, that's where the list came from.
The county's never asked you to consider cutting any of these things because of funding, though. This has not been, "Well, we're going to limit your funding, and so please take something off this list." That has not happened. Is that correct?
It did not happen this year, no.
Okay, so, we've had things on our priority list that we've had to cut because of funding?
Yes, as you see, that reduction in funding over the years was a result in limited availability of resources, yes.
Do you remember what the program was that was cut?
Let's see. Let me find that list here. We've had some senior centers, some senior clubs that were cut. So, some of that cut you see there was related to that.
But they were cut because of performance measures, is that correct? They didn't have the membership or whatever it was. Was it due to the lack of funding?
We have never, we've reduced some, a senior center temporarily due to funding reduction. But they, not due to funding, due to performance, but we've moved them back up, except for one that did not fund back up. Envision, the foster grandparent program, Good Grief, Neighborhood Connections, and then we've had some that, like Red Cross, that quit asking for funding, and that $25,000 was not redistributed, that was a transportation program. We had another one, Wichita Indo-Chinese Center, that was, funding was gone. And then the ones in the PD program area that you saw, again, that's not aging mill levy, but those were as a result of funding reductions due to the budget constraints of the county.
Do you have plans of taking this list to the advisory board and having them, I guess, agree with it? Or is that something that you plan to do?
That is something we can do, and they have requested that we look at that.
I guess I'm wondering if this is a, you know, zero-sum game, that if you didn't have the money, you would cut the bottom one off this list, and you would, that's how you would do this. In other words, the nutrition programs are the number one most important thing we do for aging. And then after that, the next most important thing we do for aging is roving pantry. And those things obviously are much more important than aging legal services or senior companion program or Alzheimer's Association. So, that's the way I'm supposed to look at this list, is that...
Commissioner, if I may.
Yes, sir.
This was a request, that the list that you see before you, the 15, the programs that are prioritized, was an ad hoc request from a commissioner during the budget process. And so, Annette happened to be out of town, she was at a conference probably picking up another award. So, I worked with staff, and we worked with, we called Annette and worked with her. And that's a point in time prioritization of the things that we, that were recommended to be funded in the 2018 proposed budget. And I know that Annette and her staff are thinking in those ways all the time. They have to recognize that we've got resource limitations, and the funding availability goes up and down. And unfortunately, over the past seven to 10 years, it's mostly gone down. And so she's had to make tough decisions with her staff about which programs could be funded and which, if there were, if there was a need to eliminate programs, then it was their professional expertise that was used to do that. And so this is another example of their professional expertise at a point in time, given a fixed number that was proposed to be spent in 2018. That's how they prioritize.
I guess I'm not aware of the, that we delivered a proposed number to be spent for a budget before we knew exactly how the money would be utilized or divided up. That actually happened. We delivered a number, saying you have to stay within this budget.
During the budget process, we were, it was recommended to us to submit a flat budget proposal. So, we submitted a flat budget proposal, and we also submitted funding requests for three different, we submitted three different decision packages. So, in addition to the flat funding proposal that we submitted, which is represented by that 15-item list, we also submitted requests for decision packages related to senior centers, community-based programs, and PD.
Okay, so, did you have a discussion about, that we don't want to, we don't want to cut some of these things? There's detrimental impact to some of these services? We'd like to, I would like to have a discussion about potentially not cutting some of these things, or increasing funds on any of these things? Did that discussion actually happen?
Yeah, I believe that it did internally. We submitted a budget request based on the prior year, so we didn't have a request for additional funding for senior centers or a reduction in funding for senior centers. And we didn't have an increase or reduction generally for those other 14 projects. We did have a discussion both within, with staff and with the advisory board to talk about additional funding requests. And we did, and so the advisory board identified those three different requests through a process that they worked with staff on. And then we brought those forward as part of the budget process with decision packages.
Okay. I have a couple of questions. Okay. I have a couple of questions. It might be appropriate for Lindsay, I suppose, but I don't know. I'll ask the question, and you guys can respond however you want, but... The ending balance in our budget this year, is it, is it trending upward? Do we have, is our budget doing better this year than last year? Was that budget better than the year before in terms of our, our budget performance?
Good morning, commissioners. Overall, we do have an improved situation compared to what we've seen in past years through the entire life of the forecast. That takes into account all eight of those property tax-supported funds.
Do you know, and again, we actually have some data, I guess it was on the PowerPoint referencing 2010. I don't know why that, why that year was picked necessarily, but do you know what the property tax revenue was in 2010 for Central County? A chance for, I have a budget book right here if you want to borrow it, but I just can't find it. That's my problem. I've been flipping through that book, I can't figure out what page it's on, so I apologize.
Lindsay, I thought you had it memorized.
While she's looking that up.
All right, I apologize. And this may not go back to 2010. We may need to go pull up an old budget book on my phone to look at actual.
If you need to answer the question later, that's fine. I was just wondering if you could answer that. Back in two thousand, I think the senior formula was passed in two thousand and six. That's the data I've got. Does that sound about right? Two thousand and six is...
The senior center approved in two thousand and four, and implemented over two thousand and five and two thousand and six. It had a two-year rollout.
So since two thousand and six, I think I've got some data that says that in two thousand and six, I think that the mill levy...
Yeah, I think there was some misinformation on a document, Lindsay had shared that with me, and I reviewed that, and it's like, oh, no, that was incorrect. It was actually approved in 'oh four and implemented over two years, 'oh five and 'oh six.
Okay.
So it's a fifty percent funding increase one year in two thousand and five, and a fifty percent in two thousand and six. So it was finalized in two thousand and six. Does that make sense?
I actually have some data, I think, that shows that the mill levy equivalent that was funded in two thousand and six was a zero-point-one-zero mill. Does that sound, anybody can verify that? The reason I'm asking is I'd like to compare how that's changed over the time, you know? As assessed valuation, we had a recession, of course, in two thousand and nine and ten, but it's rebounded somewhat. And our assessed valuation, I think, since then is obviously positive. Go ahead.
Yes, commissioners, I can verify the mill levy equivalent was point-one-four-seven mils back in two thousand and six. That is information we provided to you earlier this year.
Right, that's, that's just for senior center. Was that for?
That, right, that was just for senior centers, I'm sorry, yes.
Point-one-four-seven. And what is it, what is it now?
For two thousand and eighteen, at the two, or the $620,000 level, that's slightly less, it's point-one-three, one-three-seven.
Oh, I see, so the point was zero-one-zero was how much money you'd have to increase the mill levy equivalent. I have that number here somewhere, I think forty-five, forty-five thousand dollars was the...
Right.
Point-zero-one-zero. So if you just wanted to put it back at the same mill levies they had in two thousand and six, based on what's going on in the economy, then that would be about a $45,000 increase. Doesn't really, that doesn't really fund the sheet, but it is something that keeps them leveled with our local economy, I guess is a way to look at that. And I don't think that's one of the proposals, but that's something I think we ought to be looking at, is if we want to just let them grow and shrink with our economy. I mean, I think it's an idea that we ought to contemplate. And of course, it doesn't create these nice stair-step levels of funding for different senior centers, but I think that's why we have a agent advisory board. They might be able to look at that funding and figure out where they get the biggest bang for the buck. Anyway, just an idea for us to consider.
Commissioner, I do have your 2010 number, if you're interested in it. For property taxes collected in that year for the entire eight funds was $120,583,782.
Say it again, Lindsay.
Okay. And what is it, what is it today?
Our, our estimates for 2017, for the current year, are $127,803,442.
Okay. All right, thank you very much.
Sure.
All right, a couple, if you don't mind, Mr. Sherman, I have just a couple more questions, and we'll be done here, but... You know, I don't know if we actually have ever defined the purpose of senior centers. Do we have a commission statement or a reason of what, what we're doing this for, purposes for spending money at senior centers? I have my own ideas, and I think...
Not that I'm aware of.
Maybe we ought to ask for a purpose to be defined, I think, again, by the agent advisory board. Might be a good place to have them work on a purpose statement as to what they're trying to accomplish. Because I think this idea that matching tables and pickleball is what this is about, is, in my opinion, is a misrepresentation of what I think senior centers are trying to do. As their seniors continue to, the senior population continues to grow as a percentage of our population, I think the intent of senior centers is to keep people independent and in their homes, and keep them basically connected to other people. Hopefully, they, help them get their medical checks, help them get their prescriptions, help them get transportation as needed. I think there's a number of things that senior centers are trying to accomplish to keep seniors healthy and independent, and as a consequence, they don't become Medicaid applicants. And Medicaid applicants, of course, ends up being a cost to taxpayers in another way. So you might, to the extent that senior centers are effective in trying to keep seniors independent and in their homes, there's cost savings by not having people come back to the government for other services in other ways. So I think there's a mental connection that I'm making, at least, that says if their senior centers are effective in doing that, then that's part of the reason why they get together. It's not just some of those things that were mentioned, but it's, it actually has a much larger purpose, in my opinion. But can you talk about transportation? I think Mulvane and Oklon both lost transportation services in the last couple of years. And I know that we've tried to advocate for solutions that I think are trying, we're trying to solve that, but it hasn't been the same as what they used to have. Can you talk about that a little bit?
Well, I think what you're referencing is a, the city of Wichita, through Wichita Transit, had had a contract with our transportation program to provide what is referenced as newly urbanized transportation services. So that is for the communities in this ring, kind of the donut around the city of Wichita, that were identified in the 2010 census as newly urbanized, so that's, so it's kind of this ring. And Mulvane was one of those. Oklon was not part of that, but Mulvane was. And there were several other of your smaller communities. And we were contracted with Wichita Transit, they had funding, and before it was newly urbanized, Sedgwick County Transportation through our division had received federal dollars from the state of Kansas to do that transportation. Then it was the city of Wichita, about a year, two years ago, they, the city, this, because of their own funding constraints, decided to quit funding that program. So that was a loss for individuals in those communities to come into Wichita for, to access services. So that happened and impacted Mulvane. Oklon changes were a result of some changes that Wichita Transit made in their public transportation that changed some of the routes in that area. But certainly, transportation is an, is an issue. I think the city of Wichita, as we had applied for a grant for that same type of funding for the city of Wichita, and that program will start with our department January one. So we will be able to begin to develop some new accessibility for people in those newly urbanized areas.
Thank you for that answer. I was just curious if the senior centers are aware of transportation needs, and they've got volunteers that are willing to help.
We do have four or five where we work with more of the rural senior centers. And we have a R S V P, which is the volunteer program, and we coordinate with them, several of those, to maximize the use of volunteers to provide transportation for their members and community members. So that is a small way to help meet some of those transit needs.
All right, thank you. I think the senior centers, at least in Oklon and in Mulvane, are sensitive, because there's some of the seniors in those communities that can't get to their doctors, that type of thing, and they're having, it's a real problem. And I guess my thought would be, is that senior centers would be, would be the perfect part of, part of the solution, I think, that ought to be put in place there. But back to the priority list for just a second. How many of these fifteen programs have, have other sources of revenue? In other words, there's grant funds or whatever? I know senior centers is completely a mill levy-funded thing, but the other fourteen, do all the other fourteen have grant dollars?
All of the others have other sources of funding, and I think all of the senior centers have some other funding sources, too. Some of it might be very minimal. They do fundraising, and, you know, it is very varied about where they get their funding. You know, sometimes other cities put some in, sometimes they have some small grants or some other programs they do.
Let me make a point here. I don't know if this is, as I understand it, and again, maybe I'm incorrect, and so if I misspeak, please, someone raise your hand and tell me if I'm incorrect. But I think Hayesville and Clearwater, and Mulvane and Derby, and even, I think, Bel Air, the one that we have funding that goes to, and then maybe a few others. There is city funding that goes to those at various amounts, to the extent that they can do that. But I think the Wichita senior centers, do they receive funding from the city of Wichita?
No, the city does not fund, fund them. Now, a few of them are in city-owned buildings, and they might get reduced rent, like pay a dollar a year or something, but there, there is no city funding. The majority of our senior centers in Wichita are managed by Senior Services Incorporated. And I knew they get some United Way and other minimal sources of funding. They do some fundraising also. So there are some other sources rather than city funding that fund, help fund them. And then, well, familiar, not being, is the other senior center in the city of Wichita, and they have a city-owned building that they get for, I think it's a dollar a year. Yes, it's a dollar a year now. So that's a kind of in-kind contribution.
For, for the audience and for my colleagues, I'd like to make two points here. One of them, Derby, I'm extremely proud of Derby's growth. They're doing tremendous. Their assessed valuation's through the roof. They're doing great. They do a lot of funding from the city of Derby for the Derby Senior Center, and I appreciate that very much. The Derby Senior Center, I think, is probably one of the best in the state, if not broader region than that, in terms of what they're trying to do there. The membership, the services, and other things like that. Derby has set the bar very, very high. But one thing that makes that possible is this is the assessed valuation, assessed valuation of the city of Derby is just, this is a chart that shows you from 2007 to 2016. It has gone from just under $150 million to over two hundred and about two hundred and twenty, two hundred and five million dollars. And that's just over a short period of, basically, I think, ten years. So tremendous growth in the city of Derby. And Derby, again, they do fund their own senior center, they're invested there, and they're doing a great job. And I would, I think that just shows that they're leveraging our dollars and our investment, they're, they're committed to that as well. Let me talk about Oklon for a minute. By the way, one mill, one mill in Derby generates $208,000 in revenue. Here's Oklon, the same, the same exact chart, but this goes from eight point, it's under $8.4 million, down to $7.2 million in assessed valuation for the community of Oklon. Pretty, not, this is not a good chart. And the, one mill in Oklon generates $7,400. And they do have a senior center, and so their ability to fund that senior center from the city of Oklon, from the community of Oklon, the Oklon Improvement District, is extremely difficult. And so they do have a very active senior center. They are, they are busy practically every day down there doing things with their seniors. And they actually have a staff person that works with those seniors, and I think they're in the audience today. So I guess I make, I make my point that there is a very difficult situation for them to overcome. And we just talked yesterday about Oklon in terms of the sheriff's G I S map and some of those issues that we just talked about. I'm, I'm sensitive to those, you know, we have programs to help those that can't help themselves, and I would say Oklon is a community that has very little ability to help themselves. And so I think they're, I would advocate strongly that if we wanted to come off the chart a little bit and think about, let me use these words. I think right now, what I, what I would say is, what's happening right now is really not formula-based. It really isn't, because we're, we're increasing funding for some things by choice. And that's fine, the commissioners have voted for that, and that's fine, I support those things. But we are appropriating money as we desire for senior centers. It's no longer based on the chart. And this idea that we don't have funding available, I would argue, I don't think that's true. Our CFO just mentioned a minute ago, our budgets are performing well. I look at the numbers in the, in the book and say, we're doing pretty good. I, I'm very proud of Central County and our financial status. I think we're doing pretty good. So what this means is we've, we've kind of gone into the discretionary, in other words, we're making decisions whether we want to fund them or not, not, not based on available funds. And it's subjective. It's our opinions, whether we think they deserve the money, or whether we think there's value there. That's where we ended up. So if we're going to go in that direction, I would make the argument, especially for Oklon, that they are doing their very best, but they need help. And if we're going to be subjective, and we're going to appropriate money where we feel like it's needed, I would make the argument, Oklon needs help. So I'll just make that. And I like the formula, because it, it doesn't, it doesn't, it doesn't mean that we've got to be subjective and have feelings about what this is, is good or bad. It's based on performance measures. And I think a lot of us who believe in good government like the idea of performance-based budgeting. Performance-based budgeting says when they're doing good things, and they're doing, you know, things that they demonstrate value, they demonstrate return on the investment, so to speak, that those are things we'd like to invest more money in and continue those trends. And things that aren't working in government, things that are wasteful, or things that are inefficient sometimes, are areas we'd like to maybe say we shouldn't fund those things. And so, performance-based budgeting is what that chart's based on. But now we've, we've got, we've gotten away from the chart, and now we're moving in towards a more of a personal opinion on appropriation, whether we want to fund them or not. And I don't, but I agree with that, so, anyway. I think I got like maybe one or two more points, and I would like to be done, but, and my question chart. Okay. I seem to have lost my, oh, I, I know what I was going to ask. We talked about, there, the ballot question that was passed in twenty, I'm sorry, in nineteen eighty-two, it was a ballot question that was passed. To the extent that we are subjectively appropriating money as we see fit, what was the purpose of that ballot question? Why, why do we need that to do what we're doing today? Did that ballot question actually have any, any obligation by the, by the policymakers, the governing officials, to do anything? Because the way I read it, it looks to me like it, all it does is limit our ability to spend money up to one mill. I don't know what the culture was at that time. I think the intent, when people voted on this, I think they thought they were, they were causing us to want to fund senior programs, but that's not what the question actually does. It says, shall the following be adopted, an annual tax not to exceed one mill? Shall be levied in Sedgwick County to fund a senior, a senior, a, fund a service program for the elderly? That was the exact question, and it passed two to one, fifty-four thousand, five hundred ninety versus twenty-seven thousand, six hundred. And that question, although I think, you know, initial, initial look at that is, it's like we're, we're asking the governing officials to fund elderly, elderly programs. I think what it actually does is limit us to one mill. But my question is, that question, when it passed by the voters, does it actually tell us to do anything we're not doing right now in terms of, it's intended to be subjective and discretionary funding, and not telling us to do something that we're, like set a mill levy for elderly, elderly programs? My interpretation is this, what I think this question means to me is, we, we could have passed a resolution said X number of mils for senior programs, and let the economy drive those dollars, and let, let these organizations, you know, your organization figure out the best way to use those dollars, but that's not what we do. We allow that mill levy that goes to elderly programs fluctuate up and down as we, as we see fit. And I guess my question is, what was the purpose of the ballot question? Because we could do exactly what we're doing right now without the ballot question. It doesn't require us to do actually anything. We just make a decision to fund things that we, as we want to. Only thing it does is limit us, is the way I see it. So I don't, is that, was that the purpose of the ballot question, was to limit us, or to ask us to do something? Anybody?
When was that passed?
Nineteen eighty-two.
Eighty-two?
Nineteen eighty-two.
I doubt if there's anybody in this room that can give you rationale or arguments for the ballot question, you know, thirty-five years ago.
Okay, I, I understand that. I guess I, I see if, if we're just going to appropriate money as we see fit, and it's subjective and discretionary, this ballot question didn't actually make us do anything. I don't really see the purpose of the ballot question, other than it limits us. Does anybody have an opinion on that? I see Mr. Counselor.
I'm sorry to be in the back row. Do you want me to come to the microphone?
Yes, please. It's being recorded, please, if you wouldn't mind. It's being recorded, please, if you wouldn't mind.
Commissioner, I don't think that it even limits us. I think we could spend more even than what a mill is equivalent to on senior programs. So the question is, what did we accomplish by adopting that in 1982? I would have to know what we were doing prior to 1982 as far as spending on senior programs. We can spend, the ballot initiative that was voted on gave us authority to assess up to one mill, but in fact, I don't think we would be limited to that. If we wanted to spend more, it just wouldn't come out of that.
Well, it just says not to exceed. That's why, that little phrase, not to exceed, it looks like it's limiting, but, again, we have powers to levy taxes and spend mill levy property tax money on these types of programs without the ballot question. So the whole point of the ballot question, to me, is very confusing. Why was it even put up for the people to vote on?
Well, believe it or not, I was actually kind of around in 1982, but I don't remember all of the arguments in favor, but I suspect, looking at the language, that people wanted a, wanted us to make a commitment that we were going to do something for seniors, but I think that was, and I'd have to know what we were spending before that. Maybe we weren't spending anything, but we are making that commitment now. But I don't think that we're obligated to spend any of it now, and I don't think we're limited to the equivalent of one mill. It's just that we can only assess one mill for this, and we could take it out of other spending if we wish to do so, if we wanted to exceed that. So I think your point is correct. I don't know that it accomplishes a lot, but it does, it does manifest a desire on the part of people in Sedgwick County to fund these programs.
I know it's a little unusual, but, you know, we designate one and a half mills to WSU. I found out back before 19, I'm sorry, before 2001, Sedgwick County Zoo was funded with a static mill levy. And I made the argument that the zoo would have actually had $10 million more since 2001, had they stayed with that original formula. But that's, they went to a funding formula which was discretionary, and we appropriated money and made commitments to funding, but it actually cost them $10 million since 2001. You know, WSU, we don't question whether we should give them $8 million this year. We just do it, and because it's in our agreement, so to speak, that that's what we do. I guess my thought would be that the commissioners could essentially define a mill levy for senior programs and let that be something that grows and shrinks with the economy. So as we, as the economy grows and there's more money coming into the county, we don't take that money and build other programs. You know, this year, I supported it. The Arts Commission got $15,000 this year. They didn't get that last year, for example. That was a decision we made, which is fine. But it's hard to argue we don't have the money for something we've already kind of committed to with a sheet that we gave seniors. It's hard to make that argument. When we actually funded things, they show we didn't fund last year. We made discretionary appropriation decisions, and...
I would point out, just for your information, that the Board of County Commissioners in 1982, when they placed this on the ballot, had the opportunity to say, we're going to assess a mill and spend that money on senior programs, and they opted instead to put on the ballot a question of up to one mill. So they had that policy question in front of them, and this is what they chose to do. The other, and I'm not advocating one way or another, but the difference between this and the WSU mill levy is that that mill levy money is being spent by other folks, and that was part of a commitment to bring in Wichita State into the border region system. Here, this is a little different, because the money is being spent by, is raised by us and spent by us as we deem appropriate. So we have a little more discretion with that.
And I appreciate that. I think you're absolutely right. I guess the intent is, if you define a mill levy, the discretion comes out of that. It is no longer subjective, it just becomes formulaic. And I think that there's, again, there's pros and cons of that idea. But the way this question's worded, I guess, my opinion is, it seems like the commissioners at some point could have just defined a mill levy number and let that number be static, so to speak, unless we'll want to make it to us to change it. But it becomes a baseline for how money should grow to hopefully meet the needs of the growing population of seniors, but anyway.
Lindsay, did you have a comment that you want to make?
Not necessarily that I want to make, but I will say, from a financial, well, just to address the question about why we would want to do it, from a financial perspective, setting up that fund means we may only spend the dollars raised through that fund on that service versus something like the general fund, which we could use to provide any service we wanted to, essentially, but there would always be that constant competition. By segregating it, the commissioners have the opportunity to set the programs and say what they want that aging money spent on, so.
Right. I'm also curious, I understand that the mill levy did jump up after this was adopted. It jumped up, not by a mill, but jumped up a portion of a mill, and I think that was carried on for many years. Can we find out what that jump in the mill levy was? Again, we weren't, I'm not, I don't know if we have minutes to figure out what the thought process was, but I guess my point was, the mill levy did jump after this ballot question passed, to some level.
We can do that research.
It'd be interesting to find out what that was, what, you know, what was the intent, but not that it puts us in a corner in any way. We have total discretion today to do whatever we want to do, but I think it'd be interesting information to reflect upon. Mr. Chairman, I think I've said way too much, so I will stop. Thank you very much, Mr. Chairman.
I was going to make a smart comment, but I'm, alright. I accept it. Commissioner Ranzo.
All right. I have a couple more questions. On some of this data you provided, we have a couple cities that are in both Sedgwick County and other counties.
Yes.
And you have, you know, the population and attendance, is that, is that for people who live in Sedgwick County only, or have you split that out? Can you split it out?
I don't know that we can. That is for the total city population.
Okay. It'd be interesting to have that if we could, and do we know how much, I'd like to have the data of how much funding each of these entities get from other sources and what they are. I mean, to me, that makes a difference, and I want to make sure some of my previous comments are not mischaracterized. When I talked about pickleball and matching tables, I was not saying that's all that senior centers are about. I fully understand what senior center's about, but I was accurately reflecting the testimony that was given to us by some of the senior centers and what they said they would use additional money for. And to me, that would indicate that if that's what they need, want to spend the money on, that perhaps they have adequate funding overall, because we have to keep in mind, some of them do have adequate funding from other sources. And so then that leads to the value question, if they apparently have enough funding, are we just going to follow this formula that we have set arbitrarily a few years ago? So that's the issue. I understand senior centers, but I also know what they said they would use additional money for, so, thank you.
Mr. Manager, how do we bring this to a conclusion for today's purpose? I mean, is now, we've got, I don't see anybody else asking to speak. We've got the information. Now we'll just, you'll get back with us on if there's any action that we want to initiate.
Correct. The idea was for you to take the information, do your analysis, and then we'll see what kind of consensus we have amongst the commissioners with the four options.
Okay. Well, Commissioners, I didn't, if there's another comment that you want to make, well, on this item, if...
Sir. Real briefly, your slide number eight shows that we're subsidizing the senior centers just a couple pennies less than $62 every year. I was wondering, based on that and the top 14 other priorities, what is the subsidy of each of those by membership?
What was the membership for the others?
If you look at your slide number eight, you said that $61.94 per person is what we're spending on senior centers.
Right.
What is the total amount that we spend per person for the other 14 programs?
Oh, those vary. Those are all unit-based services, so it varies tremendously. Like for the Meals on Wheels program, that would be a per-mill cost. For a medical care service, that would be a different cost. So it's not a per-member cost, it's a per-service. So those are funded in a different method that typically is based on a unit of service. So each, for each service provider or each different type of service, it's a different type of unit. So the services vary quite differently, so there's a unit rate that's set.
Okay. And I guess as we close it out, one question for the manager would be, as you take a look at this, is that if this is the highest priority that we have, that we're going to decide to spend money on, well, is this the highest priority that we've got? As you come back to us with some answers, if you had, I think this is what, $78,000, what you were looking at, something like that, if you had another $78,000, is this the number-one priority that you would spend that on? So I just leave that as an open question right there.
Thanks. Commissioner Howell?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. To the, I could just weigh in on some of the previous comments. Again, the other 14 are grant funds that we have a match requirement, so we can't...
No.
That's not true.
No.
I'm sorry, you said the 14 have other...
They have other funding sources, but they're, not, not all of them are used as match. So there's a couple that are. A lot of these programs, so when the mill levy was established, what the advisory council helped the department do was identify gaps in services. So many of these services have other funding sources, but those funding sources were not enough to cover the need in the community. So these resources were targeted to those services over the years to help meet the unmet needs in our community.
So the answer, again, I'm not sure what Commissioner Dennis wants exactly, but I would like to be, I'd be interested in the same data, but what I'm interested in is seeing the total funding for those 14 programs. You know, what is the...
So I think what Commissioner Dennis was asking was, I think there was a request for $73,000. That was the discretion, the decision package was for $73,000 for senior centers, and that targeted for senior centers that met the criteria to move up. I think that, so it was $73,000 that was forwarded with the advisory council recommendation to request funding to move those senior centers that had requested over the last several years to move up based on their performance, and that would meet those needs. Was that your question?
Yes.
And his question is, if we're going to use that money, where's the best place to put it? What's the highest priority?
No, not just senior centers. If we look at our overall budget for Sedgwick County, what is the most important place that we would put money? Is this the most important place that we would put $73,000?
Well, I think, you know, from my perspective, you know, we have a couple more items for the meeting today, and also, I did provide you a table last week of a lot of requests, new requests that we've had that kind of puts it in perspective. Certainly, there are priorities that commissioners have to weigh, and we do have that table if we want to get into it at the end. But we have a lot of competing priorities right now, and the commissioners certainly have some decisions to make about what is the most important of new requests, if we don't want deficits and we want to maintain a good budget.
May I continue? I'm sorry. By the way, Oaklawn has representatives in the room as well, and they didn't get included in the discussion earlier, but if they were successful in making the argument I think they would like to make today, it would actually be another $22,000 for their senior center that they've been qualified for for many, many years, but that would bring the total up to $95,000 if you did all five of those, or $73,000 just for the four that were identified earlier. On slide 12, on slide 12, you show physical disability funding. I got a chart, I think, from our CFO, talks about the different levels of spending for different types of services. And I think she says on her 2018 recommended budget, it was $438,000 for physical disabilities for 2018. But the chart shows something around, I'm going to guess, about $290,000. Why are those numbers different? Is it 290, or is it closer to 438? Or am I misinterpreting what I'm seeing here?
Commissioner, can you clarify which other table you're looking at that has the physical disability information?
Actually, this may have came, this probably came from Mr. Kaufman. He sent me, I think he sent all the commissioners, a table that talks about 2018 recommended funding, and in the second paragraph of this, it shows physical disabilities, $438,364, or 4.29% of that particular category. Total expenditures for that category is $10.2 million, but of that $438,000, or as I can tell, it correlates to this chart, and this chart is showing about $290,000. Why is there difference?
I don't know if Tim has that answer, but I believe that this just shows what is funded to the service providers, and there are funding that goes to transportation, and there might be some administrative dollars in there.
It's an outstanding question.
Well, if there's other funding, that makes me want to question all these charts. These charts show reductions in funding. I'm not sure I trust them now. So I need to know for sure these are the right, is this accurate?
This is what we fund service providers, so that's what all of these, all of these are reflecting, what of the eight, of the mill levy dollars fund the direct services.
But there's other dollars you're telling me, I mean, how do you get to $438,000?
So Commissioner, if I can point you to your budget book to page 567, you'll see that there's about $280,000 in contractual services, and that's what Annette is referring to as payments to providers. But then you'll see that there's an inter-fund transfer of about $160,000, and that is a grant match or grant support for, that goes into the aging grant fund. And so that's why you see those two separate pieces of funding. But the total designated to physical disabilities through the general fund is $438,364.
Okay, well, let's be, let's not, I want a chart that shows that number, not, this is, this is a subcategory, so to speak. It's not the full thing, not the full picture, but it gives me an opinion that may not be based on what's really going on here. So this is not, in my opinion, a good, accurate chart. This is misleading, in my opinion. So I would like to have these charts be done, if you don't mind. I'd like to see how it really, really works out. Does that make sense? Am I misspeaking? Okay. And I just want to say, I just want to say one more thing. Mr. Counselor uses the word "up to," and again, he, in effect, is correct, but that actually, the words "up to" are not in the ballot question. It says, quote, "Shall the following be adopted, an annual tax not to exceed one mill shall be levied in Sedgwick County to fund a service program for the elderly." So I just want to make sure that's very clear, that the words "up to" are not in that ballot question, but it does mean the same thing. So just for a piece of clarification. Mr. Chairman, that's all my questions. Thank you.
Okay. I think we're ready probably to close this up, but I would say, just as a comparison, part of our aging mill levy funding goes to seating program at Terrible Palsy Research Foundation, and they have been cut in the last six or seven years about $50,000, $60,000 for seating programs for people that need wheelchair seating. They got cut $7,000 in the next budget, and I know we go through lots of priorities, but these are people that have physical, daily needs, and they are getting about $50,000 less than they got a few years ago. They're serving about 30% more people, and so when we make priority judgments, we need to take into consideration what some of the physical, everyday, 24-hour-day needs are of some of our citizens that we're trying to fund. And I just think that's an important thing to keep in mind. Okay, with that diatribe, whatever, we'll go on. Thank you for your input. Thanks for the discussion, and I think we're ready for our next topic.
All right, Commissioners. Next, we have Brent Shelton, who will go through the two, the next two items, both WEBA and SCAD. And Lindsay's in, back up if needed.
Good morning, Commissioners. Brent Shelton with the Department of Finance. The next two items that you are going to be hearing about are here because, beginning of the 2016 budget, the county did not identify specific allocations to the economic development organizations through the economic development budget, and instead, these requests for funding are brought to the commission for consideration each year. So to move forward with either or both of these would require that this item or these items would be on the BOCC agenda for your formal approval, because the amount of requests exceeds the manager's authority to grant, and then they would require new funding agreements. So let's start with the first one. So, let's start with the first one, which is the request from the Wichita Independent Business Association, or WEBA. A little bit of background, WEBA was founded about 86 years ago by a group of local businessmen. Their idea was what we now call "do business local." They were wanting to do business and support each other. They're now a membership-based organization with about 350 small business members. They are organized to advocate for and to promote the growth and development of independent business. WEBA approached Sedgwick County with a funding request for $125,000 for 2018, and that's what we're going to discuss at this point. The $125,000 is specifically earmarked for a program that they call the Business Growth Initiative. The Business Growth Initiative is defined on their website, and I'll just read from that. It says that it is, "The WEBA Business Growth Initiative supports business expansion and development by establishing strong relationships with small business. WEBA will assist in identifying and addressing barriers of growth in order to create a healthy and inviting business environment." If you provide funding for this, they would, they've indicated they would use the money to fund a full-time person to expand this initiative. The initiative is about two years old. They started in 2016, and they have received funding from the city of Wichita of $125,000 in 2016 and $125,000 in 2017. They indicate that the city is going to be agreeing to funding them in 2018 as well at the same level. Because it would support a new full-time position, we anticipate this to be an annually recurring request, and the county has never provided funding for WEBA in the past, so it's a brand-new, a brand-new request. What they have used the money for currently, the money from the city of Wichita, is some staff expenses, and they've also been providing scholarships for technical training students. So, that's what they've been doing with, with the current allocation from the city. The business initiative program is designed by WEBA to target small businesses, independent businesses, and folks in the workforce, or potentially in the workforce, that aren't being served currently by economic development programs. And what they do is, in the initiative, they kind of have three different strategies. One is to focus on job creation and filling open jobs by providing job training and scholarships, and then they have a mentoring process that's kind of two-tiered. One is that they mentor small business owners or entrepreneurs on their needs. They help with accounting, they help with business plan development, things of that nature. They also work with individuals and provide mentoring services, some through the WATC Promise Program, which is adults going back to school to get their GED. They also work with Jardine Middle School and their STEM program to mentor students and help them prepare for productive careers. So, they are focused on folks that currently they feel don't have another outlet or another economic development program that can help them. In 2017, they've stated that their objectives are to facilitate or help create 50 net new jobs, and then to assist in fulfilling open positions for their, of their business participants. They're trying to provide at least 75 individuals access to open positions by these participating businesses. They're doing that through some of their scholarship programs, providing scholarships based on business needs and businesses' requests to individuals to get them the job training they need. They may be current employees, they may be people that are not currently employed. And they have provided, they intend to assist at least 40 participating businesses as member, as mentors to those businesses in some of those areas that we previously mentioned. During 2016 and 2017, which is the period of time that the program's been exist, in existence, some of the results that they have pointed us to are that they've had four job fairs, and they've reached out and helped 1,400 job seekers at these job fairs. They pointed to about 200 job placements in the last couple of years that they've assisted with. They've issued about $65,000 in scholarships for technical training, and then they've begun these mentoring programs for underserved communities and underserved folks. Like I said before, Jardine students, those folks enrolled in some different GED completion programs and things of that nature. So, just to recap, it's a $125,000 request. To proceed with that would require it to be an agenda item for the Board of County Commission, and with that, I'll open it up to discussion.
Okay, Brent, thank you. I think probably all of us have been contacted by leadership of WIBA explaining their request, but their ask is for 125. Is that correct?
That is correct.
All right, thanks. Commissioner Ranzel?
I have not been contacted by them, so this is really the first details I've heard about this. So, the city has been paying $125,000 a year for two years. Well, what are they spending that money on, that they're getting from the city?
They've used it to fund the scholarships for technical training, and I think they've used it for staff support or some sort of, some salary.
Did they increase their staffing as a result of the city's donation?
I'm not sure, but I understand they have one new position during this time period, so I think it's probably related.
Their staffing. Okay. Well, I guess I'd like to get an, I don't know, an itemization of how they spend that $125,000 over a year, to understand that. And they're talking about job creation. Now, isn't that, okay, what are they, I mean, we already give a fair amount of money to the partnership, I think $400,000 altogether for job creation. Are they not doing something that needs to be done? We give 300, but then we got a couple 500 things that we're doing to the global trading. I mean, I see that as all the, it's a whole economic job creation type deal. Anyway, at least 300,000 plus whatever, some of the other stuff that we've been adding on. Okay, so what are they not doing that WEBA's going to, I mean, I mean, should we be asking the partnership, hey, you're not doing something?
I think what they indicate that they're doing differently is they're focused on these very entrepreneurs, startups, small independent businesses, and then they're focused on the workforce development piece.
And the partnership's not focusing on small businesses or entrepreneurs?
They're indicating...
I thought they had an E2E thing, and entrepreneurship was a big, supposed to be a big deal in this.
Well, WEBA is a part of the, of GWP, so they are a piece of it in that they support the overarching umbrella of what GWP is going for. So, stats from, from WEBA are included in the stats for GWP.
Okay. Have they created any jobs in these first year? I guess maybe I'd like to see what their goals and objectives have been for the first 100, for '16 and '17. What goals and objectives? I need more information, I mean, a lot more information. To me, this is kind of similar to the previous discussion we had, in that this is part of a bigger discussion, so I, that we need to keep things in context, I think, and see how much money we're going to spend on economic development, if so, what initiatives? I mean, do we need to rearrange? Some of this stuff I have, and some of these things that they're talking about, I guess, these are just questions, I don't even mean, I mean, can't some of this stuff be fee-for-service if they're going to deal individually with small business owners? And some of this stuff, as WEBA, I guess I thought this is the sort of thing that they already did, so I have lots of questions. I want to know what they're, I want to know where they're spending the first $125,000 on, and what the goal is of that $125,000, how that differs from what ours is going to be. Does that make sense? And kind of then wrap my head around it. I mean, having four job fairs, that's good, but we have kind of similar things supposedly for the partnership and their, I don't know.
The city, you know, when they provided their amount, that one FTE is to support on Budsmann to basically, on behalf of the city, to help work between the city and that particular business to cut through the red tape and et cetera.
So, then I want some specific examples of all the businesses that they helped cut through the red tape.
Okay.
I think that's, I think, if I get that some information, then maybe I'll have more questions then, but just having seen this for the first time, that's kind of what...
And to, just for, on your initial point on what we spend, if you remember this year in our budget for the 2017 budget, we allocated about 560 towards economic development initiatives. GWP membership at 300,000, then we do SCAD export plan, other ECO DEVO initiatives and special projects. It's about, close to 559,000.
Okay, then one other question. I have the spreadsheet here. It says WEBA, 25,000. I know some, is there an updated one of these that I can?
Yes.
Get?
Yeah.
Because I know there's been, there were some things left off, and obviously, that number's not right, so I'd like to get an...
Updated the table. We have one, if you, if commissioners want to see it.
Yep.
Mike, we'll have copies. Jessica's bringing copies to that table. We can talk about it after we're done.
Okay, thanks.
All right.
All right. Commissioner O'Donnell?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. This WEBA funding request is substantially higher than when I met with their representatives. Is that, is that what you understand?
That's my recollection.
Okay, because you were in that meeting as well, so, yeah, I'm not sure exactly where we ended up, but it was either 25 or 50,000. So, Brent, this is the request they told you that they wanted to present to us?
Right. That's correct.
And it is in line with what they briefed me too, Commissioners. They told me 25,000, they would like 125,000 matched to what the city did, but they were willing to accept, you know, really from 25,000 to 125,000 is the range.
Yeah, but, true, and I understand that, Mr. Manager, but that's not outlined in Brent's proposal. In Brent's proposal, the only time 25,000's mentioned is when they're talking about scholarships.
Well, that was in his, in his communication with WEBA. That is what they told him was 125,000.
Right, right. I understand that, but, but when Commissioner Underwood and I met with them, it was, they were asking for 25 or 50,000.
Did they even mention 25,000? Do you bring?
No. The only 25,000 was the scholarship amount.
Yeah, yeah. All right. Well, I wish it had been addressed in Brent's proposal, because I think 125,000 is probably a non-starter for the majority of the commission. So, thank you, Mr. Chair.
You're welcome. Commissioner Howell?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I'm just, just to make it clear, I have not been contacted by WEBA either, so this is the first time I've seen this as well. And I'm sitting here trying to reflect upon the different ECO DEVO initiatives we have in our community. I'm just trying to brainstorm. I'm thinking of, of course, GWP, which we're invested in, isn't REAP intending to be an economic development organization? Regional Economic Area Partnership, is that right?
Yes.
So, that's an economic deal. We're going to talk about SCAD in just a minute, and that's economic development organization. And BRG, Blueprint for Regional Growth, is that a, is that a, is that under GWP, or how do, where does it fall in line of other tool?
It's a part, it's a part of GWP. It's a framework for execution of strategic priorities.
So, we don't fund them directly, but it's a strategy that's, falls under the umbrella of GWP?
Correct.
Okay. And then WEBA, of course, we're talking right now, is an effort to create jobs and economic development. And we have, of course, Global, I think Commissioner Ranzel just mentioned a minute ago, and E2E, I guess, is another one. Is there anything else I'm missing that, I'm just curious, what else is on that potential list that I'm just not thinking of? I don't know. I'm just, I guess I'm interested in the fact that all these strategies are slightly different than each other, but they're all trying to accomplish the same goals. I'm curious if there's any WEBA reps here in the room? Anybody attending from WEBA today? No?
Don't think so.
I think that...
Do you have a specific question?
Well, no, I just, I want to know who I'm supposed to speak with, and I wonder why we haven't been, I haven't been, I haven't been asked about any of this. I'm just a little surprised that they're not here available to answer questions if I, I would have questions, probably. Maybe they could answer, but with respect to training, the GED completion program? Can you talk about that again? What are they doing there?
They indicated that they're working with...
Next Step Alliance, yeah.
It's called a Next Step Alliance GED completion program, and that is a program that's designed for adults going back to school to get their GED.
Is that, is that in USD 259?
I think that's in association with WATC.
WATC. So, we're funding, we're funding GED program efforts, if you will, through WATC already, and I have met people just in the last few months even that have been enrolled in 259's GED program. I think the state takes the position that if they've not graduated from a Kansas high school, they're eligible as adults to enroll as a virtual student and access computers and tutors and everything, and it's free. And that's available, I don't know where all the places are in the city, but there's a number of places where that's available, and it doesn't require another alongside organization to make that happen. It's already a very effective opportunity for people to access. I mean, we just need to probably talk about that, encourage people to take advantage of the opportunity, but it's, it's out there, it's already funded, and that's funded by the state. And also, we also have sent Bill 155. We also have the workforce, workforce program out there on Amity Island and 21st. It has a lot of job training opportunities that they manage, and so I guess I'm wondering, what is it that WEBA is doing uniquely that somebody else isn't already doing, is my question? What are they doing that's not being done by someone else?
If, I might just jump in here. I think, I think WEBA's program, especially on GED and some of these things, are mentoring type programs, where they don't actually run a competing program or a subsidiary program. They're just doing mentoring. They're trying to be sort of a facilitator for, for needs that they can identify from having someone on the street calling on small businesses. So, that's, this, this sounds a little more grandiose than it actually is. I mean, they're going to just try to find out what small business guys need and get them pointed in the right direction, but they're not starting new programs. Now, that may or may not influence our decision of whether we want to be in, but that's how it's going to operate.
One of the questions I would ask WEBA if they were here, is I would like to know, do they view themselves as being under, under GWP? Because I understand there's, I guess, two perspectives of that, that they may not feel that way, but GWP might feel that way. So, I'm wondering, are, do they, do they view themselves as being under GWP? I don't know how to answer that question. Is there anybody else in here that can answer that? Minister Manager said they are, but I understand from talking to someone yesterday that I don't think that's what they view. I don't think they view it that way.
It's structured that way, but they're not, they're not real active, because they don't, they don't have the resources or capability, but they are, they are a willing partner with GWP.
I guess my perspective is, we have some ECO DEVO dollars. We would like to make sure we have return on the investment, and I would like to make sure those monies go to places we feel like are, are really accomplishing things. I'm not saying that WEBA is or isn't, that's really not my comment here, but I wonder why we don't fund WEBA through GWP, let the, let GWP be our primary ECO DEVO arm, and let them, if WEBA's under them, and if Breg is under them, and if, you know, other, you know, if some of these things fall under GWP's paradigm, why we would not just invest more money in GWP and let them, if you will, manage ECO DEVO efforts for Sedgwick County? It's just my opinion. That's all I have, Mr. Chairman. Thank you.
No, I understand. Good comments. Commissioner Ranzel?
So, still need that information that I asked, but if, if the ask goes down to 25,000, then the question is, okay, so then what's that 20, how does the program change? And what's that 25,000 specifically going to be spent for then?
Sure.
Okay. Is, would it be helpful to, to see if, since there are some commissioners who haven't talked to them yet, would it be helpful to either bring them into a staff meeting, or come in and actually sit down with you in your office and talk to them?
I think it would be better if this was... I think it would be better if this was face-to-face interviews with the WIBA people, I don't think we need to take a staff meeting for this.
Perfect.
I think before that, though, I'd like to have some written responses to these things, so that I can prepare and have, have my questions ready for them.
Okay, we'll get those.
Okay, I think, are we ready to go to the next item?
Yes.
Okay.
All right. Next item, item C is a membership request for the county to renew their membership in SCAD, the South Central Kansas Economic Development District for 2018, and the funding request is for $60,000. SCAD was established in 1972 by then-Governor Robert Docking by executive order as a nonprofit organization designed to bring together communities and advocate for economic growth. SCAD works within a 14-county district, Sedgwick County has been a member of SCAD since inception, and is the largest member county in the, in the, of the 14 county members. SCAD basically offers grants, loan opportunities, money that comes from the federal government, state government, and different regional programs, and they're focused on community The $60,000 that they've requested for 2018 would be, I guess, to put that in perspective within their organization, that's about a little more than half of the dues that they receive from the member counties, they get 111,000 in dues from everybody, and we would be $60,000 of that. In their entire budget of just under 900,000, the county fee would support less than 7% of their 2018 budget, and they're on a fiscal year running from July 1st to June 30th, so when we're talking about 2018 money, half of this, or 30,000, has been invoiced to the county for the second half, that we make that payment before the end of the year, so it's going to affect our 2017 numbers, it's their 2018 numbers. Basically, to give you just an overview of some of the things that SCAD does, they're focused in three different areas, housing, lending, and then in grant writing and administration. So in terms of housing, they partner with cities and counties to try to get different sources of funds to rehabilitate homes, stabilize neighborhoods, things of that nature. They indicated that some performance measures, and one of them was that they would rehabilitate 24 single-family homes and weatherize 350 living units, so they're trying to get things more energy efficient, and then rehabilitate some single-family residences in the region or in the district. In terms of lending, they have a unique set of loan programs available to them wherein they provide gap financing, they work with the Small Business Administration, they may have a lender that, or a borrower that doesn't have enough collateral, so they work to provide some gap financing and work through the Small Business Administration, they work with private sector lenders as well. One of the things that they have done, or currently doing for directly with Sedgwick County, is that they administer the microloan program that the county's been involved with for a number of years, this started with a grant that we got from the State Department of Commerce, and currently there's one microloan, active microloan in the program, so it's been underutilized, but they've met with us recently, and we've discussed ways for them to maybe market that program better and utilize some of the funds that would be available there. They've indicated that, on your sheet, you'll see that they've indicated they want to package six SBA loans and partner on another 50 loans within the district, and then increase the utilization of the microloan program, or work on an alternative source of funding for that, those types of individuals or those businesses. In terms of grant writing, they work with municipalities to help them obtain grants and low-interest loans, a lot of those are used for that community stabilization or for, for some of the housing or basic repair services for housing. They have indicated that the, a goal here is to submit and administer four new grants and/or loan community infrastructure applications during the course of the year. Now historically, our membership fees have been based on population, and in addition to membership fees, we have funded, provided funding to SCAD through administration fees for a couple of programs that were specifically designed for home rehabilitation and for neighborhood stabilization, those two programs ended in 2014, were closed out in 2015, so currently, the only money coming from Sedgwick County to SCAD would be the membership fee and one administrative fee for the one microloan that is still being serviced. Again, to move forward with this, a BOCC agenda item and a new or updated funding agreement.
Okay, Brent, we're contractually obligated to give administrative fee for, or fee for the administration of the microloans, is that right?
Yes.
Okay, and, and that would be in addition to this grant, and how much is that?
I think it's, it's less than $800, $900, something like that.
Okay, okay. And how long has Sedgwick County been involved with SCAD, do you know?
Since the inception in 1972.
72, and previous to a year or so ago, we were paying at a rate of 17 cents per capita or something like that?
Right, I think the membership fee was 85, $90,000, something to that nature.
And, and then the last year we reduced that amount, or last couple of years, whatever.
Right.
Okay, what, of our contribution to SCAD's operation, I guess it's 7% of their total budget, is that right?
Right.
From this information?
Mm-hmm.
I, I don't see anybody else, I just say my opinion is, I, I believe that SCAD provides a real function in our 14-county area, and Sedgwick County's a key county in the South Central Kansas area, and I think we should be supportive for these programs that they offer, and I think with the new leadership, that I believe it will have a greater positive impact, because the last couple of years, it's been trying to find its way a little bit, and I think now stabilized and ready to go forward, so I'm, my, my perspective now is that it's something I think we should continue to support, but Commissioner Howell?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, on the, on the grant writing and administration, generally speaking, who are they working, who are they trying to help in that regard?
Cities, counties, in terms of providing.
Right, and that's what I thought the answer would be, that's why I asked the question, I guess my, I'm curious as to why these cities and counties don't have staff that, or someone they can go to besides SCAD that can provide, you know, they pay for service, for example, have someone help them develop the application for whatever grants they're trying to go after, you know, maybe even the League of Kansas Municipalities or KAC might provide some resources, I don't know who, who else would, but I'm just, it's strange to me when you talk about a governing body that has tax authority, that they have to depend on a, a, basically, an organization like SCAD to accomplish a city, official city and county business, that to me seems odd, that they don't have any other way to do that, so, when I talked to the previous representative of SCAD that was here before, they made a comment that we were not funding that, our dollars were going simply to the macroloan economic development arm of the, of the three-headed organization, in other words, they got three things, they're trying to do housing and grant writing and then lending, but our dollars were all going to be consumed, if you will, on the economic development part of this, is not, and not the housing and not the grant writing, I don't know if that's the way it's interpreted still, but that's a good question, I'd like to know, as intended, are our dollars going to go towards ECO DVO, or to all three things equally, or how's that money going to be used in the program?
Steve Wilkinson, Executive Director of SCAD, thank you, Mr. Howell, for that It goes towards the operations or the staff, and when I mean staff, I mean staff that helps with writing grants and administering grants, as well as staff that writes loans or helps with accessing capital. It helps a little bit with the housing, but as you know, the weatherization program really is somewhat independent, it's a part of the organization, but it really truly is self-funded itself, so we find that the funds truly go to the operational core, the accounting, the administration part, including me, as well as the staff for writing grants, and since we last spoke, you made a very good comment about why is SCAD helping write grants, why aren't these communities out there in a better financial position, and, and I asked that very same question, they don't have the professional capacity to write grants, they can go to independent contractors and get charged $3,000 to write a grant, or they can try to kind of work out a grant, but these grants are very, very competitive, and if you make errors, if you don't get your data correct, you're out of the mix, so it's important for them to go to the experts, and we are the experts, we do assist them. As I've gone into communities, we are also talking to communities, you're asking for a grant, but are there other funds, have you looked at low-interest loans, maybe you have a need, or you think you have a need now for a grant, but can we help you get in a better financial position where you may not need a grant, so we're trying to work with communities to assist them, many of the communities in the 14 counties just do not have that professional capacity, it's either retired, or they're having difficulty acquiring young people or individuals to take those positions, or they just don't have the budget to do that, so that's why we're there to assist them.
I guess I, I don't understand why they wouldn't have budget to do that, because they are a governing body that has taxing authority, they have, they have revenue that they, they have to budget for that, so, I mean, they do have, it's same as anybody else does, and so, it's, it's strange that counties would, would fund this when that, they're, they're a taxing jurisdiction, but so are cities, so it's strange that money's flowing from one taxing jurisdiction to another, essentially is what this is doing.
A bit of, I'm learning it's a little bit of educating these cities, working with these cities, it's not the counties that we're working specifically for the grants, it's the cities, these towns that we're working with, if you went to Anthony, if you went to Eureka, if you went to Sedan, some of the, some of these small towns, you would understand there's a real need for assistance and for some professional expertise, and that's what we're providing them, because they are a member of SCAD.
Okay, with respect to the, the housing thing, we talked about the performance measures, you rehab 24 homes and weatherize 350, is that a one-year?
Yes.
Measure, but that's over the, that's over the 14 counties?
Yes, and much of that is Sedgwick County, I mean, we've, we've tried to, a good example is Kingman County, we've tried to work with Kingman County, but it's hard to get applicants. Sedgwick County, we find much of our services for the housing are here in this, in this particular county.
So, yes, from my perspective, again, this is, again, my, I think my interest, I'm not sure if I'm alone on this, but my interest is economic development, creating positive trends in our economy, creating jobs and, and improving the quality of life of everyone because of our economy doing good things, the weatherization program helps out those people that are living in those particular homes, but the money's coming from other people that have similar, you know, they may have similar problems, but they're on their own, so it's hard for me to pick out 350 families out of this broad community that we've got and, and help them specifically, it's almost more of a, more of a charitable organization, it takes, it seems like it's well-intentioned, but it's not economic development, that's my point, it's not, it's not ECO DVO, it is certainly...
It is, it is, it's a great charity, it's a great gift to be able to give to.
And I'm not saying it's not charitable, I'm saying it's not economic development.
It is economic development, because what we're finding is in the communities, these households that are spending funds for utility bills that are excessive, we come in, we help them reduce their utility bills, we're finding an immediate impact, those funds are being used for food, clothing, it's being used for goods and services in your community and other communities, it's having a direct impact and immediate impact on economic development.
You were saying that SCAD dollars, SCAD somehow provides subsidy for utility bills, food and clothing?
Doesn't provide subsidies, by weatherizing your home.
I see.
You reduce your utility.
So you're offsetting their, you're offsetting their expenses, that they would use for their own repairs, but they're offsetting that, so they can use their money for utility bills, food and clothing?
Yes, thank you.
Okay, well, again, as I talked with the previous director of SCAD, you know, they made it really clear that they recognized that our interest was economic development, and they actually, again, I say money's fungible within the organization, so I don't know how they would actually do this, but they made it clear that our dollars would be used for creating jobs and helping businesses grow and, you know, creating new businesses, and it wasn't going to be used for housing or necessarily even grant writing, but it was going to be used primarily for the jobs, but back to the, back to the lending aspect, you're telling me right now there's only one microloan in place, out of what you've done in the past, there's only one active microloan program going on, oh, one active microloan program, what do you mean by that, I don't understand what that means?
I wasn't, and I, go ahead, I apologize.
There's one active microloan in Sedgwick County, I can't, I don't know.
So it's a, a business out there needed some help, and they got involved, and they helped them with a microloan, there's only one loan right now that's in place that's currently active?
Correct.
Through the fund in Wichita.
Well, see, that's, that's...
For the fund in Wichita, but that's, that is not the full picture, the full picture is that SCAD works with financial institutions here in Sedgwick County, and we have, right now, as I shared in my emails, about 1.7 million in financing available in the pipeline with financial institutions for equipment, for real estate, which creates new jobs, so that particular number is separate from the greater funding that we provide, or gap financing, loan guarantees that we provide, I think right now we have 11 loans working with financial institutions, and I can get you the exact number and the exact amount today, we also have worked with the Network Kansas and the E Communities here in Sedgwick County to provide loans, so there's more funding available at other loans that we have processed and closed and are originating today.
Okay, all right, thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Okay, thank you, Commissioner Dennis?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, well, as we wrap today up, I want to thank everybody that was here and presented to us today and gave us some information for us to ponder. As far as the last two agenda items that we've been talking about, ever since I've been here, one of my main goals is economic development, but what I've been trying to put my arms around is what is our overall plan for economic development for this region? We've got REEP, Breg, GWP, SCAD, WEBA, Export Plan, all these different organizations, but what we need to know is what is, what is this economic goal, development goal that we've got for this region, what do we, what are we looking for, where do we want to go, and then how do we take each of these organizations and put them under that umbrella, what are the different programs that are going to support that overarching goal that we've got out here, and that's what I haven't seen at all since I've been here, I don't know where we're going, I don't know that we've got an overall plan for every, all of these different organizations to work under one direction, and so until, until I see that someone, some big thinker sits down and says, this is what we need to be doing for economic development, overall, in this entire region, I've got a problem with saying, well, we're going to shoot this bullet this direction, and this one this direction, and this bullet this direction, because we don't know where our target is, we don't know what we're aiming at, without a map, it doesn't matter which direction we go, because whatever direction we go, I guess is okay, or it's wrong, so, what I would love to see happen here in this area was to find this strategic thinker that's going to sit down and then bring all of these organizations together under this umbrella, and saying that this is the direction that we need to go in the future for economic development, so, I appreciate the fact that WEBA needs money, I appreciate the fact that SCAD needs money, that all these different organizations need money, but until I see that we've got a strategic goal that we're aiming at, and we know where our target is, and then we start putting any of these programs in as pillars to support this overarching goal, I... we start putting these programs in as pillars to support this overarching goal, I'm, I'm not in favor of, of shooting these bullets in different random directions.
Thank you, Commissioner. Commissioner Howell?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I'd like to also say thank you to everyone involved in these presentations, and Steve, I'm glad you're here, and you bring a fresh face to this organization, I think is much needed, and so I appreciate you taking that position, and welcome to Wichita. And I have to say, I agree with the comments of the previous speaker. I, I think that one of my frustrations is, it feels like we're not thinking of the big picture here, and I feel like we're just trying things. We don't, we don't have, we don't have necessarily good reporting, good feedback as to whether what we're doing is working. And even GWP, I think, is, is on a better path the last year or so with the reports that they have made, and I appreciate that. I think that's the same standard we ought to apply to others, but even that, I think, has opportunities to, to even do better. I, I would much feel, I would feel much better if we, if we had a plan, an economic development plan, that was comprehensive, that looked at all these different things and understood that, at least on, again, WEBA and SCED and GWP are not new. They've all been around for a while. I'd say on the front end of a, of an idea like that, you, you want to invest in it and trust them on the front end, but then you need to, you need to verify and get reporting on the back end, otherwise, if it's not working, don't do it. Move the money somewhere else that is going to verify, that's going to show that there's a return on the investment. This has to be purposeful, and if something's not returning, returning something to make the economy go in the right direction, we shouldn't fund it. We ought to be willing to move those dollars to something else that's going to be more effective, or try another, try another direction, if you will. But right now, I just feel like we're just being split six different ways, and I don't know that any of these things are necessarily working. I don't feel like we're, we're getting good reporting back. The performance measures are question marks. I, I would feel much better if we had a, a good plan that we would put perhaps even a larger chunk of money in one direction that was comprehensive, and we, we could know that we're getting something for the investment, rather than splitting that money up in six different directions and not know, not know what we're doing. So I, I, I see your frustration, and I agree with you, and I think you make a good point. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you. Don't see anybody else asking to speak, so I guess the next step is, Mr. Manager, for you or your staff to see what the will of the board is on these issues. I mean, we're not voting today, so... And I don't know what the timeframes are, I mean, so I'll let you manage that.
Probably the most emergent one is SCED. I know they've sent us a bill for this six-month amount, but to, to, to both of your comments, I know Chairman Unruh and, and I sit on the GWP Strategic Advisory Team along with, with Tom, and we have made these comments that you have suggested multiple times to GWP. I know this is something that their leadership is looking at as far as where to go from here, and what strategic product to produce, but we have mentioned this multiple times. Tom is on a working group that they're using to help figure out the way ahead on that particular strategic plan, and I look forward to seeing where GWP finally goes with that. But we have stated this, probably Chairman, what, the last four or five months, multiple times. So I know they heard from the county on this particular point, and I look forward to seeing what they come out with. I know for all three items that were briefed today, we owe you some information back, whether it's charts, or even to get the WEBA representatives to come here and talk to Commissioner Ranzel and Commissioner Howell, and also, we owe you some, some information back on the true amount, what they're asking for, for WEBA, and, and we'll provide you with all the information requested.
Commissioner Howell, did you want to speak?
Yes, I do. Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I'm sorry to bring this up. I, since we're still in an open meeting, and I, I wanted to say, I forgot to bring up one thing I wanted to bring up earlier. Again, I went on the Second City-to-City Tour this last week, and Commissioner Dennis was, was with me, and we had a, a great experience there in Raleigh and Durham, North Carolina. And last year, I got to go to Nashville, and one thing that seems to keep, it seems like it's a reoccurring theme, and I, I use that phrase. I think the city, the Chamber has sponsored, I think, about nine of these trips, if I remember correctly. But the reoccurring theme, and I think even James Chung brings this point up, is that we don't value our own community, we don't know what we have. It makes me, you know, someone on the trip made the comment that, come to Wichita, you'll like us better than we do. We're, we're, we haven't invested in economic development, but I think one of the things we're not really doing well, that I think we need to do, do better, and that would be to get our message out, not just to people outside of Wichita, and then Go Wichita, that's a good, a good effort on that. They develop great touristic, tourism commercials that they play in Kansas City area, for example, encouraging people to come to Wichita and spend their money. But I think that there's a, the point that we're not, I think these other communities actually advertise for their own communities, and they get people to see what's good about their own community. And there are, there's plenty of good things about Wichita, but people may not know what those are, because we're not doing a good job of messaging and getting people to realize, or think about, or contemplate what's good about Wichita. And I think that one thing we're, we have not been doing, we've, we've invested in these eco-devo tools, to some extent, over the years, and I think the results have been, have been not necessarily everything we want them to be. I'm wondering if we ought to maybe consider an advertising budget that would help us get our message out to our own community in a way that we haven't in the past. That might have an impact on economic development, a way we've not even thought about yet, you know, whether it be through Go Wichita, or through the Chamber, or whatever it would be, but we're not doing a good job of getting our messages out. And I think that the reoccurring theme that happens every single year on the City-to-City Tour, we come back and we, we don't respond to that with any type of action plan, and it just continues. And so unless we do something different, I don't expect anything different next year. So I would like to just put out there as an idea, or an action item for us to consider, as maybe, as a term, in terms of economic development, is putting some of the dollars towards messaging. We're bolstering our communications department. I would love to see our staff think about ways, not just through social media, but maybe through print ads, or through television commercials, or billboards, or radio, or something else that gets people thinking about what, what's great about living in this community, and why that we want to choose to live here, and why we like it here, and just refresh their ideas and their thinking, and get them to understand that. I think it would change the culture. These other communities, they do that, and it seems to work. So from my perspective, we have a great opportunity. We've not really identified that as a strategy, but I would like to have us consider that, whether it be at a staff meeting, or at least I put the thought out there today, you guys can think about that, but I hope we have a future discussion about whether that makes sense. We can maybe bring experts in on, from, from some of our partners, and it'd be the Chamber, GWP, or Go Wichita, or whoever it would be, and find ways to start messaging out, I guess, to help people understand that, and hopefully that would have return on the investment. Thank you, Mr. Chairman. That's all my comments.
Any other comments? All right, then I think we can consider ourselves adjourned.
Hey, Tom? Tom? I have a question.